... Please rise and be with you. I see members with a pleasurable face.
Father, we love you so much and we just thank you for this view today to give us. Father, we thank you for God who has come and served the citizens of this city. Father, we just ask you to be with us tonight as we build the road we need, uh, as the community that has still helped us make the right decisions for this city. Father, we just ask you to be with all these, uh, born and dead victims, fathers, all the lost loved ones, the ones who are still not found. Father, we just ask you to put your hands there and help these people make it through this tough time that everyone is through. We ask you to be with our fire and our police and all of our saving people who have to make this decision for this city. And again, we ask this city to be thankful for your standing.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Congress has appointed a new, uh, municipal court judge and he can be nice to this morning. So I want to ask Judge Coleman and Blair Jennings to come to the front.
I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state, that I am duly qualified according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office to which I have been appointed.
To exercise the duties to the office for which I have been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof.
And that I will, to the best of my ability, discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and of the United States.
And preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mayor Pro Tem, ladies and gentlemen, members of council, congratulations.
Thank you.
Blair Jennings.
Congratulations.
Right here. This is the father, also attorney.
And his mother.
Who is not. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings. Thank you. Mr. Rome, would you please come to the front, please?
I'm right here.
Mr. Rome has a presentation.
I'd like to ask Alexandra Zimmer to come up, please. Members of council, Mayor Pro Tem, Alex has achieved the highest award in Girl Scouts, the Silver Award. I think that's the highest honor you can get as a cadet. She has done the Toys for Tots with the police and Mr. Fowler since 2008, I believe. And she helped 300 children receive toys this Christmas. And through her project, she learned how to do Excel, she did a spreadsheet, she saved like three hours from the previous year so that the volunteers would be able to spend time with their families on Christmas Day. So, on behalf of the mayor, who's not here, and the mayor pro tem and the city council and all of the citizens, we're very proud of you. And the certificate says, "Girl Scouts of Eastern South Carolina honors and commends Alex Zimmer for her dedication and commitment in earning the Girl Scouts Award." So this is for you. We have a beautiful patch, because we know how important those are, right?
Yes, sir.
In your pen. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alex.
Yes. Don't go far. Okay. Um, I'm a Marine, I have a big voice, so I don't need to. My name is Kathy Brennan, I'm a Master Sergeant, I'm retired from the Marine Corps Reserves, and I've known Alex since before she was born. Um, Alex, she's been volunteering with us with Toys for Tots. I know my family personally has been going out for almost 15 years on Christmas Day. And once Gary got involved, Gary, Officer Zimmer, Sergeant Zimmer, and his family got involved, I know where Alex got her willingness to volunteer and participate. And this year, it was really a joy to see her because she got those spreadsheets together and she's marking everything off.
And she did.
And for a young lady her age, she's got everybody organized when we were downstairs putting all these bags together. And it made it so much easier for all of our volunteers to get everything together because I think we had about 3,000 to 5,000 toys.
We had 5,686 toys.
And we had them bagged in less than four hours.
Yes.
And ready to go for all these families. And in no small part due to the efforts of Alex, getting the spreadsheet together and helping us. And on behalf of the Marine Corps Reserve Center, I wanted to present her with this Commander's Award from the U.S. Marine Corps Reserve. Proud to recognize Alexandra Zimmer for outstanding support of the 2010 Marine Corps Toys for Tots program. Your generous contributions have enabled the Marine Corps to bring joy of Christmas and send a message of hope to America's less fortunate children. And I just want to add myself, as I said, she's been doing this for years and, you know, for a young lady to be willing to give up her Christmas morning, just like my children, she doesn't get to open her presents until later unless she does it the night before. We're up at 5:00 a.m. and it's an honor and a privilege to be able to present her this award and to recognize her because we always hear about the bad things kids do. And we have many good children in this community and it's an honor and privilege to recognize her with this award. Thank you.
Young lady. Well, may I say something to this young lady?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, and all the people, you know, just like the sergeant said, you always just hear the bad news on television and in the newspaper and everything. Young people like this young lady is never recognized. We have to find a way to recognize young people like this who could give encouragement to other children. And it's just so rewarding. Right now, I just got chills all through me. And young lady, keep up the good work and may God bless you. You are so precious.
Thank you.
Do you think you're going this summer? Because of Girl Scouts?
This summer?
And ask Ms. Jorinda.
Ms. Jorinda, would you like to come up with us? I'm very here. Um, this summer, our, we have created kind of another Girl Scout trip and we're called the Girl Scout Globe Chatters. And we're all cadets and seniors who have raised money to go to Europe this summer for 12 days.
Wow.
And Ms. Jorinda is one of our chaperones who's going with us, who's helped us a lot.
Y'all will need another chaperone.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir.
We got, um...
Dr. Mitch Carnell?
Mitch Carnell, what is it?
Right there. Okay. Would you like me to read that, sir?
Go ahead, read it, please.
Proclamation declaring June as Communications Month in the city of North Charleston and designating June 1st, 2011 as Say Something Nice Day. Whereas June is designated Communications Month in the United States as communication is the most important skill we possess as individuals. And whereas tens of millions of workers in the United States are disengaged in their jobs due to poor communication affecting the economy and access of an estimated $200 billion per year. And whereas 60% of workers do not receive compliments on the job leading to worker dissatisfaction. And whereas the city of North Charleston has long believed in the importance of effective communication within its workforce. And whereas the city of North Charleston promotes a sense of community with all of its employees and citizens by encouraging better communications. And whereas the city of North Charleston is committed to maintaining a friendly atmosphere for our employees, citizens, businesses, and visitors. Now therefore be it resolved that I, R. Keith Summy, Mayor of City North, Mayor of the city of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim June 2011 as Communications Month and further proclaim June 1st, 2011 as Say Something Nice Day in the city of North Charleston and urge all citizens of our great city to participate wholeheartedly in their observance.
Congratulations, too.
Thank you very much.
Let me say about, he's been working with the city of North Charleston for a number of years and has met with our employees. He always says something nice. He always talks about...
I hope so.
Do we verify, I mean, we want to present this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, city of North Charleston was the first to recognize Say Something Nice Day. It's now listed in the chase calendar of events nationally, so it's recognized. And North Charleston was the very first to do it. So we are very pleased and proud to work with North Charleston. Thank you.
National Safe Boating Week, wait down. You please come. Say it down, Miles, from the Coast Guard, I'll zero. I'm so glad you had it with you tonight. Would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation, whereas recreational boating is fun and enjoyable and we are fortunate to have sufficient resources to accommodate our boating demands. And whereas our waterways can become crowded at times and be a place of chaos and confusion. And while boating is a marvelous source of recreation, to the unprepared it can be a risky sport. And whereas not knowing or obeying the navigation rules or the nautical rules of the road, drinking alcohol or taking drugs while operating a boat or choosing not to wear your life jacket are all examples of human error or a lapse of proper judgment. And whereas wearing a life, the wearing of a life jacket is a simple task that has the potential to reduce the number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year by approximately 80%. And whereas we continue to spread the messages of boating safety during National Safe Boating Week and throughout the entire year because the educated are more likely to take precautionary measures to protect themselves and their friends and family. And whereas, on average, 700 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States with nearly 70% of these fatalities caused by drowning, proving the overwhelming need to wear life jackets. And whereas the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas modern life jackets are more comfortable, attractive, attractive and wearable than styles of years past and deserve a fresh look by today's boating public. Now therefore, I, R. Keith Summy, Mayor of the city of North Charleston, do hereby proclaim May 21st through 27th, 2011 as National Safe Boating Week in the city of North Charleston and urge all those who boat to, boat smart, boat safe, wear it.
Congratulations, too. And also, we thank, you know, the Coast Guard, I'll zero, and what all they do for the Coast Guard people, this is very deserved. And we want to, we appreciate everything you have done for this community and you out there all the time. I mean, we have had a lot of accidents and all, but it's moving. Coast to Coast Guard is always there to try to help out. We appreciate you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I want to put that to you in the past.
I understand. Thank you very much, sir.
Would you like to say something?
I will.
Members of the council and citizens of North Charleston, last year there were 26 deaths in South Carolina waters due to recreational boating. South Carolina is actually the eighth largest recreational boating state in the nation. And with that, boating is a big part of our daily lives, be it commerce or recreational boating. So it was imperative that we have this proclamation. And I commend the members of council for helping us profane since Safe Boating Week the 21st through 27th of May. We'd be commended for your efforts to protect your citizens. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hate, would you indulge me in a quick photograph that I have to give to my superiors that I actually showed up for?
I am saying something else. He's got a report.
Thank you, again, sir. Thank you, members.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next item we got is the recognition of Chief Zombol by the Citizen Advisory Council. He's going to be doing it. It's Doctor again.
In honor of the CAC, Citizen Advisory Committee, we would like to ask Chief Zombol, would you please come forward? And all members of the CAC that is here, would you please come to stand with me, please? A letter of appreciation. Police work is too often a thankless job. Officers risk their lives every day serving and protecting us. However, the news media tends to focus on the negatives in law enforcement. Studies about police officers going out of their way to help the public are rarely reported. And yet every day, our officers demonstrate compassion and sensitivity to the needs and concerns of the citizens they serve. It is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that we, the Citizen Advisory Committee, would like to acknowledge Chief of Police John Zimrock through his accomplishments and achievements a letter of appreciation. Chief Zimrock has served the city of North Charleston for a decade exhibiting leadership and dedication to our citizens. In 2007, under his leadership, the North Charleston Police Department received national accreditation from the Commission on Law Enforcement Agencies. In 2008, Chief Zimrock created the North Charleston Community and Police Panel made up of civic, religious, community, and business leaders to develop and implement strategies to reduce crime in the city of North Charleston and to continue to improve the relationship between the community and police. Chief Zimrock, along with the community panel, developed and implemented the following initiative, annual gun buyback and its cool-to-be-in-school supply giveaway. In 2010, the North Charleston Police Department, along with the United States Attorney's Office, collaborated in a diversion program to redirect low-level offenders. The initiative Operation Stand, Stop and Take a New Direction, identified eight offenders that the community and department felt could change without a typical punishment and imprisonment. In 2010, the department began participating and raised online a free public crime map that connects law enforcement with the community to reduce crime and improve public safety. This allows citizens to view and filter crime data in an inactive map and dashboard to become better informed about crime activity in their area. Under his leadership, Chief Zimrock has reshaped the police department and brought back a sense of pride with his innovative management style he describes as democratic police leadership. Chief Zimrock leads his agency through his executive staff where the deputy chiefs worked along with him to solve problems, develop policies and plans, and manage the daily activities of the agency. Chief Zimrock's commitment and high level of professionalism consistently contributes to this agency's ability to deliver the finest law enforcement service to the community. His integrity and high moral standards serve as a model to all officers throughout the law enforcement community. We hope that you will honor Chief Zimrock with this letter of appreciation for all that he has done for the city of North Charleston. We, the Citizen Advisory Committee, would like to present this to you.
Chief, this is a very deserving award and we want to say to the CAC, the work that y'all do is terrific. One committee that we've put together that has been active for many, several years now and really proved to be an asset to our community. And the things y'all do in recognizing our chief tonight, which we are all very proud of and part of the work that he has done here. And the job he's been here, how many years now? About 10. Almost 10 years. And so we're very proud of our chief, please, and thank you very much for the applause for him.
Thank you all for allowing us to do it.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda is a request to approve the minutes from May 12th, 2011.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second. I'll load some, sign if I, you know, call a rule.
Would you like me to call a rule, sir? Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item.
Whoops, I don't know why we've gone blue. Item two is the final reading of an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of the properties identified as Hammerton Lodge 332 and formerly known as the Chacora Lodge Number 366 AFM located at 1814 Success Street from R1 Single Family Residential to OD Office District, along with a concurrent proposal to amend the comprehensive development plan future land use map, changing the designation from single-family traditional to community commercial.
Move for approval.
Second. 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 Okay. Any discussion on it? You ready for the vote? Please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item three.
Item three is the final reading of an ordinance to rezone the properties along with a concurrent proposal to amend the comprehensive development plan future land use map, changing the designations on the properties as shown.
Move to approve.
Committee meeting, do you hear motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve, I had. Second by Jorinda. Any discussion? If not, please call a rule. In case you didn't pick up on that, that was Phoebe at second, not Jorinda.
I have that.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item four.
Item four is an ordinance final reading, similar nature. It's the proposed rezoning of various properties on Dorchester Road, Patriot Boulevard, Club Course Drive, Hunter's Ridge Lane, Pepper Tree Lane, and Ashley Phosphate Road as listed as shown.
Do you hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion? If not, please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Item six.
Item six is the first reading and a public hearing of the ordinance for the 2011-2012 budget.
Move for approval.
This is, this is an advertised public hearing. Those of you that wants to make comments, please come to the podium and give your name and address, please. Is there any, any words to comment on? If not, we move on.
Um, we should have a motion then, sir, to move forward to a... I'm sorry, we do have a motion.
Motion and second.
Sorry.
Please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Item seven.
It's the first reading of an ordinance repealing Section 13.68 entry upon railroad rights of way or property prohibited of the Code of Ordinances of the city of North Charleston.
Do you hear motion?
Move for approval.
Moves.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on it? Please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Item eight.
Item eight is the first reading of an ordinance amending subsection 12-3A of the Municipal Code of the city of North Charleston so as to alter the requirements necessary for newly appointed municipal judges. Move for approval.
Move to second.
Second.
For the, any discussion on it? For the public's benefit, this is where we have, we're going to pass an ordinance where the old judges will be lawyers in the city of North Charleston. So that's what this is about. Okay. Any discussion on it? Please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Item nine.
Item nine is the first reading of an ordinance amending the Intergovernmental Agreement Regarding Municipal Provisions of Code Enforcement Services to County Residents.
Second.
Move by Mr. Brown, second by Mr. Astle. Any discussion? No discussion? Call a rule, please.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Item ten.
Item ten is the first reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a parking easement between the city of North Charleston and the Larry Temple Memorial CME Church.
Move for approval.
Move by Mr. Brown?
Second.
Second by Ms. Astle. Any discussion? Any discussion? Discussion, please call a rule.
Mr. Astle?
Aye.
Ms. Jerome?
Aye.
Mr. Jamison?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Ayer?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Hart?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Pro King?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to recommend that we take item Larry 14 and that's title, ma'am.
Eleven through fourteen.
Eleven through fourteen, yes, ma'am.
All right. Any objections to that?